Meeting for order Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty PM. Please stand for the application and pledge.
Father, it is pleased that Heavenly Father become before you, give you praise, and thank you for everything that you have created. And we ask you, God, in a time of bad weather, we ask you to protect those who need protection and get them out of harm's way. We ask you, Heavenly Father, to touch the hearts of many people there, that they be soft and mean and pure and treat each other with a great deal of respect. We ask, God, that you can bring peace around the world. Nothing is too powerful for you. God, we ask you to bless us, bless the town of White Springs, and keep us safe in the palm of your hand. We want to give thanks to you for everything, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll out Julie Watson.
Present.
Brandon Dr. Williams.
Present.
Keesa Birch.
Present.
Vanessa Rivers, present, will continue with the agenda. Any additions, additions, and/or amendments to the agenda? Anything to add? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Keesa Birch, motion that we... I'm sorry, approve the agenda as written.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I ran off second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, the approval of amendments for September twenty twenty-four, which includes September fifth, tenth to the budget meeting, September tenth, regular council meeting, September eighteenth, final budget hearing, September twenty-fourth, special council meeting, and September twenty-fourth, emergency council meeting. Can I get a motion to approve as read?
Keesa Birch, motion that we approve as read.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I, Julie Watson, second.
All in favor, please say aye. Any discussion, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, Mr. Richard Powell.
It's always a pleasure attending the White Springs meeting. I passed out a five-page financial report. This is for the month of August, which is eleven months into the fiscal year. So, on the first three pages is general fund. You have two funds, general and enterprise. So, the revenues to date are eight sixty-nine, nine fifty-nine. The total aim, the budget that was adopted was one million and five hundred and sixty-one dollars. So, at this point, you're under budget by a hundred and thirty thousand, six oh-two. Everyone's aware that is substantially the loss of the gaming revenue, which is almost ninety-two thousand. The rest of it will probably be collected in the last month of the year. So, your, the revenues that you have control over are tracking well. So, after that, we have itemized expenditures by department. So, if you go to the third page at the top. So, you also reduced your expenditures, knowing that you did not have all of the revenues. So, at this point, your expenditures are seven seventy-three, three twenty-six. Budget, nine twenty-two, two-six-four. So, you're actually, your expenditures are under by a hundred and forty-eight thousand, makes seventy-nine. So, you've offset the loss of the revenue through managing your expenditures, which is committable. On page four, the enterprise fund. At this point, the total income is five forty-nine, nine twenty-three. The budget's six fifty-three twenty-two. So, you're under budget by a hundred and one thousand, two ninety-nine. You extend, again, line items of departments. But if you go to page five at the bottom, your expenditures are four thirty-eight, nine thirty, which is a hundred and ten thousand dollars under, under your revenues, or as an excess of income. The budget was five ninety-two, nine-six-nine. So, here again, you underspend your budget by a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So, you, again, your, the revenues are running a little bit under budget, but you also manage expenditures. So, at this point, you are still very positive in both general fund and enterprise fund. Any questions?
Well, I can't right now.
It is what it is.
We change it what it is.
Well, I'm leaving, you don't have to worry.
Alright, so we're going to administrative departmental reports. Town manager Vanessa George.
Okay, the first thing is about town hall. As you all can see, we're not in our town hall building, but I did speak with Ms. Shannon Williams of Grantway Writing, and I'm gonna let her explain about what we discussed as far as, um, as possible financing for the building. Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Shannon Williams. I am founder, president, Gateway Grant Writing and Administration Services. I'm a grant writer. I've been writing grants, I don't know, maybe ten years. I used to work with North Florida Professional Services. I wrote grants with them for about eight years, and then I decided to go off on my own and start my, well, actually, I take that back. I decided to quit and finish my PhD, but a lot of my clients were like, no, 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 we need you, we need you, you need. So, I started the firm and to continue to work with a lot of the clients that wanted to continue to work with me. So, that's, that's how I started, and I have some business cards up here.
And she got those five hundred thousand dollars for NXT. Yeah, she got richer than five hundred.
Yes, yes, so those were, those were grants that I wrote for NXT Richardson. They came from the historical division money from the Department of State. So, Vanessa, we grew up together, side by side families. We're almost moved together all the time and everything, so I've known them for forever. I'm just so proud, proud of them. We talked about the issues going on with the building and how you all, and I think this is really good for trying to manage. What you have to do. I mean, I'm impressed, but it's, it's very, very close legislative appropriations or something. We talked about, but even though they're getting ready to close on the fifteenth, and I don't mind expediting a grant application because I've written several of them and it's not hard. I just need to know, I guess primarily, what our, our relationship is like with our representatives, because I would like the context someone tomorrow and say if we have their support for our application. So, is there...
We don't really have a relationship.
Okay, well, we gonna...
Have one, okay.
Because I like, when I write grants, I like to deal with the representatives. I like to let them know what's going on. I want them to be able to, to represent the town and say, hey, don't forget about us. So, that's, that's a major thing. I work closely with Cat Cam's office. We're doing, um, Wacassasa. We're in the same unit all the time. Wacassasa, they're doing this huge water waste, water treatment thing between Bronson and Cedar Key. Those are some of my clients. And so, you know, basically trying to find them a hundred million dollars. And we're, we're good. We, we have some, some leads on that. But as far as the town, the first thing I think we need to do is try to go ahead and get that submitted by the fifteenth, just so they're aware. Even if we don't get it this round because it's late, they'll know what's going on. I don't know, we have the test for the...
I do like to see them all with us.
We can, we can include all of that. And second, we can always do USDA. USDA has the communities, I see copies of their fat sheet. The thing with USDA is that they're only gonna fund like seventy-five percent. So, the town would be on the hook for twenty-five. So, if you want a billion-dollar building, you gotta have two hundred. So, those are just the flyers for the USDA. I'm here a lot also to ask questions and just get information from you all, so I know what I'm looking for. Are there any, like, building estimates that we might have so far? Or idea of how many departments you wanna put in a building? A lot of people are doing combined buildings with their EOCs and, and, you know, emergency operations and things of that nature. So, have you had any discussions?
Well, we are all of that in one. So, we'll probably put, you know, five offices in there and then also have a chamber. So, kind of something similar to what we have.
Anyone's gonna have room for growth there.
Yes, we do have some room for growth, but we don't need...
And you like to use the same site?
Well, we can discuss the site, because it's not necessary that we use the site. Correct, council, we can discuss that for that. Yeah, let's just see what we can do.
Okay, so...
Because I know we, the only thing we got was like sixty thousand for the roof. Six for the roof alone. That's not dealing with the mold and they're gonna have to tear our walls and everything.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, with the information of the board, I would like to go ahead and proceed with submitting that application after I do my best to contact someone tomorrow to let them know it's coming.
Okay, what is the application or name or...
Legislative appropriation.
It's that first one, proposal for legislative appropriation. You should have it in the packet.
I didn't see anything, but...
Oh, yeah, it's the proposal thing. I passed the resolution. This should have Gateway on this.
One thing I got was the, um, the resolution.
Alright. Can I get a motion to get, can I get a motion for the approval of proposal for legislative appropriation request?
Keesa Birch, motion that we approve the proposal for legislation appropriation.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I, Julie Watson, second motion. Any discussion on the motion?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright.
Okay, so I'd also like to submit the FERDA grant.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
These are all expedited, because I was due Monday as well. So that, um...
Just gonna do Monday.
Yeah, so I'll be working all weekend, but it's okay. The FERDA grant, that's the recreational grant opportunity that will allow us to just enhance what we have here for recreation. I think some of our ideas was maybe splash pad. And then I'd also like to sit up probably at the library on Friday, maybe, whether permitted between like nine and eleven, and take citizen comment. That's a part of the grant application, to just see what they think recreation, what recreation they think is needed in the area. So, I would take that comment and add it to the application for additional points, so we score well.
Kind of ask your question. So, since they're citizens, the ones, can you use them as well?
No, today it would have had to be a, um, a meeting that was posted, like a public notice meeting. Yeah, it would be, and then, and those would require like maybe seven days ahead notice or something like that. So, okay, we can say we had a proper public notice. Yeah, but I can't sit at the library and just take, take comment from the citizens and I'll do that. I'll do that from like nine to eleven. So, I don't know if you have a website to put it on or something, to let everybody, um, to come out and share the comments. Yes, nine to eleven.
Right, this side?
This side.
They're supposed to change time hours.
Right, so the FERDA grant requires, so this is how the FERDA grant works. They recommend what they think we should have, what recreation in our area. We're like in area three. They think we should be focused on football, baseball, basketball, blah, blah, blah. So, when you come to them with an idea like a splash pad, you kind of have to justify it with some of their ideas. And they also think picnicking is a big thing. So, if we put that in, we need to put in maybe pavilions, the picnic. Things like that anyway, that will support what, you know, what their initiatives are for, for recreation.
We should have a football field on that.
We need a little lap field, only know football, yeah. So, yeah, that's how the FERDA works. And I don't know if there's anything else you all wanna talk about grant-wise that I can take that and do research on, or do y'all wanna talk about that?
Anything that you can get, go ahead, I'm sorry. Fire department, any fire department grants, any law enforcement grants, anything for security. And of course, you're working on the ones for the building.
About shelter.
So, that's the city BG grant. I spoke with her about it, but we have a city BG grant open, so we can't, not, I suppose, join the social, that's the city BG grant. So, you can't have two grants, two city BG grants open. So, when that was closed, then we can work on the next one, and then we can work on possibly a shelter.
I will research to see if there's anybody else who would fund something like that.
Okay. Do they have equipment grants? Do they have equipment grants?
Like, for like your maintenance site, or is... I will find some. I've never had anyone requesting, so I will, let me look and see outside of like fire trucks.
Like, like, um, moors and stuff like that, small equipment, small.
What about, what about maintenance?
Like equipment.
That's what I'm asking.
Like you generate. Like, equipment, moors, generators, all that stuff.
Does, does Hamilton County ever, um...
No.
Okay. Well, when the town's coming through, what I would, what I would recommend the town do is go to the county, because the county gets an allotment of HNGP funds, mitigation funds, goes to the county, and the counties are supposed to trickle it down to the towns and the cities. And a lot of times they don't, because they say, you didn't ask, so we did what we wanted to do. So...
What's that?
Right. HNGP has a mitigation grant. Yeah. So, I, I write, a lot of those I'm writing to right now for Columbia County, and I tell Columbia County the same thing, hey, y'all giving the city Lake City some money? They didn't ask, you know, so... So, then I go to Lake City, those are, those are all my clients. I work for City Lake City, Columbia County, Orange Park, everywhere. But, so I make sure that the towns though, because it seems like nothing's stopped, you know, everything's stopped at the counter. And then nothing triples down to the town.
Is, is the town able to apply for themselves, or they have to go through the county?
The county would have to appropriate some of the funds that they can. Say, for instance, Columbia County under Debbie got eight million dollars. They couldn't think of what to do with the money, because their projects were fifty million dollars. So, they were making up stuff to do with their money to not offer it to the city, who has little hundred thousand dollar projects and things that they can do. So, you know, and that happens in a lot of counties. So, I would recommend, and I will certainly, like, you know, when I see it come open, to say, hey, you might wanna approach the county and say, we need a portion of these funds for our own hazard mitigation project. And those projects will fund generators. Things like that, you know, sandbag, fillers and stuff like that, that you could use for hazard mitigation projects, so. Anything else, please? I don't know, take on me. Georgia, you can thank Shannon.
No, she's great. Thank you.
Alright.
Shannon, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy in touch. I'll get you that information, so we're gonna make sure we get you that mobile data report.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great to add to, to the appropriation request, with the evidence.
And if you need anything else, just let me know.
Okay, I will.
Now, we'll be on her, so make sure she...
I'm gonna get her tonight.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and do it then. Alright. Alright. Y'all see me a lot. Thank you.
Okay, procurement of contractors before the storm or an emergency. So, with Hamilton County went to their meeting, and they only pay people that are DOT approved or what have you with them. So, in order for us to make sure we're doing this properly, it is best if we procure contractors before the storm. Now, we had one guy came out with his lawnmower, because he lived, I mean, not lawnmower, his, what did he, his tractor, what, backhoe? He cleared pretty much everything in White Springs, because of course, you know, we don't have any resources. Therefore, um, what's his name? What's the...
Levi.
Levi, Levi. He cleared a lot of the streets and moved a lot of the debris for us. We have to make sure we, um, we're, we pay him, but we have to put this out for procurement. So, I'm asking the council to do procurement for contractors before something here. Let's take precaution before the storm. Have those people in place, so they can just go ahead and get to work, and we don't have to be trying to search for people, or just getting people. Trying to get people, scrambling to get people. They already be ready to roll for White Springs. And this, I always step up. But that'll be on new business, excuse me?
Is there any action?
That's gonna be on a new business, that's why I proposed it. Uh, we got EDA proposals. I see right here, this is the resolution, but I give it to the attorney. This is for, um... Shannon did this. Is this for Shannon?
Yes, that's what I'm getting.
She had to add, to change the attorney. She had a different attorney, but it gave that to the attorney. Uh, EDA proposal. So, we spoke with EDA, Clay with EDA. There are several things that, when I came into the position that the town of White Springs had to have done, they were supposed to do certain things and to be in compliance every five years. So, we pass this on to Clay to figure out what all we needed to do. And if you take a look at this, it's, it's two things that is from the town, excuse me, that is from, um, Department of Commerce that we need to do. There's more than that on this proposal, because we asked them what else we need to do to get our set of compliance before that comes up, and to get our land regulations squared out. So, the first thing that he's saying, he put it in here by the order of importance. Prepare to submit the required response to the Florida Department of Commerce to bring the town's comprehensive plan into compliance with Florida statute one-six-three-point-three-one-nine-one. That estimated cost is thirty-five hundred, a little over thirty-five hundred. He has the details of everybody's hourly rate, how much they think it'll be, and what they will do. The second thing is to prepare the comprehensive plan private property element as required in the state statute. That will be nine hundred and sixty dollars. If you notice, it's in red, the existing non-compliance issues with the Florida Department of Commerce are the most time-sensitive and will be addressed first and take part as task one and two, that's what I read. The balance of task three, four, and five are proposed to be prepared over the next ten months. And that is update, excuse me, update the town's comprehensive plan based on the evaluation and appraisal report. The town's comprehensive plan is currently out of date and needs to be updated to confront, excuse me, to conform to the data provider and the E report to be completed as part of task one. Now, we only have copies of this. I, I neither knows that I tried to convert it to a Word form, so it can be, um, updated. I passed that on to Clay them, but they're gonna do the work to get that to a digital form, because right now, we only have a copy that we found out there, and we end up other than it. Task four, update the town's land development regulations, which provide the town with a complete qualified version of the LDRs. And that is, and, I'm sorry, task three was eight thousand, two hundred and five, and the task four was two thousand, two hundred and twenty. And task five, prepare, excuse me, preparation of water supply plan as required by section three-seventy-three-point-nine-zero-nine for the statute and section one-six-three-point-three-one-seven-seven-three for the statute and associated comprehensive plan amendments. That will be six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. The total balance of that, of everything, is twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. But of course, we don't have to do it all at one time. The only things that we definitely need to do is tasks one and two, which is the response to the Department of Commerce and private property element. And we definitely need to do one, because that also has an effect on our grants. Okay, that is their proposal. Number four, the one cent sales tax, excuse me, sales tax proposed by the county. So, in the county meeting I and I attended, they were discussing possibly increasing sales tax. You will see that on your ballot. Now, they're saying that this sales tax should be used just for the fire department. But my question was, how much of that money will go to the municipalities? Because Hamilton County is trying to start their own fire department. Now, they're saying that they don't know if they will give any to the municipalities. They're saying the municipalities have to have a full-time fire department. As you all know, we have a part-time fire department, but depending on the amount of funds that they're giving, we could have a full-time fire department. Now, I'm gonna leave my personal opinion out of this, but I did want to update White Springs citizens on this one cent sales tax. Excuse me, yeah, that's it, one cent sales tax, okay? Now, five on here is looking at some of the property that we have. Most of it is vacant property, but then we have this one building. Until we decide to surplus and sell it, I think that we should look at possibly renting it. If we could rent this building, um... We can use this revenue for something like, um, tools or something. It, it's not much revenue, but an additional thousand dollars, eight hundred, a thousand dollars a month. The town definitely could use any form of revenue that it can get. I would give the attorney, if it's the pleasure of the council, to see about us possibly renting the old jail. But those were my suggestions. I'm just trying to think of other ways to bring revenue. I know that's not much revenue, but...
Thank you. The old jail, where is it?
By Hall of Dance.
Okay. Is that one of the things that we changed in insurance? Is the, is your insurance rate gonna go up if you rent it out?
No, what I'm, what I'm requiring is a triple net lease, like I have a break. You're gonna do a triple, triple net lease where the leasing, they will take care of everything in the triple net lease, even the taxes.
Okay.
And maintenance, it's not on us. Alright, that's it for my reason.
Have anybody asked about leasing that old jail?
No, we never made it public, but I was just thinking about certain things that we could bring do for the... They won't buy it.
No, this was rent.
Okay.
He just wondered about...
Yeah, the only change could be the name at the end.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why we could scratch.
Okay. But it'll be with your action, though. It won't be here. That's why I haven't talked about it, it'd be down. Okay.
Alright, can, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-four?
I'll give you the number.
A resolution of the town council of White Springs, Florida authorized the filing of a fiscal year twenty-two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six for recreation development assistance program application for Splash Park included with Florida Department of Environmental, Environmental Protection. Making motion to approve the resolution.
Keesa Birch, motion that we approve the resolution.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I ran off second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Um, public works. Mr. Ray?
Storm damage, cleaning up the debris. We still, I know we still have a lot of debris alongside the road from Halene, and it's probably not gonna be removed before this next storm comes. I mean, it's just, I know Columbia County, they had like two hundred thousand cubic feet, which is volume of debris from Halene versus twenty thousand from Debbie. So, there's still a lot of debris around the DOT pick up Columbia County, Hamilton County. So there's still a lot of debris around the D O T to pick up Columbia County, Hamilton County. So they're, I mean, they're not just gonna work in Hamilton County. They're all over. So, uh. This, the debris that's on the side of roads, it it'll probably be there. And you know, if it blows away or whatever, then we'll just pick it back up and pile it back up and hopefully. They'll be good after the storm.
Is that all the rubber way is great? All in the community is speaking of?
Yeah, it's just not, not just forty-one. Hamilton County has a debris right next to it with D O T to pick up all through town. Yeah. So just like, just like last time with Devitt, which there was a lot less with Devitt than there was in Halene.
Now, what they're not gonna do is you put your trash out there, regular trash out there, they're not gonna pick it up and pass by you. So it has to be just debris from the storm. It can't be construction. It can't be regular. You clean that stuff. Yeah, it's just debris, storm debris.
Yeah, and a lot of people too. I mean, if you, if you have a tree that you think's gonna fall on your house, that's not debris from the storm. That's just something you're trying to pick up. And I mean, I know that you're trying to. Solve the problem of it falling on your house or whatever, but that, that, this is just for storm. And a lot of people put things out there, you know, because they have a tree that they think's gonna fall on their house. That tree might last another fifty years. They have enough to pick up and to do this without cutting out trees.
Yeah, I know. I'm putting that tree out.
Do we have a certain size of the tree gotta be cut up when you put it outside the road? I think like six feet?
They're gonna pick it up.
They're gonna pick it up. That's, that's, that's on a typical day but not storm. Not storm.
They're gonna have to worry. They're gonna pick it up.
Well, it brought my attention about the tree there at uh the church there. Is that civic property? I'm gonna ask you all that.
That's the county building. That's the health department, isn't it?
Is the health department where the tree is?
That's, who, what, who tree? It's our tree.
Someone said it was long, but the line seemed like it's more towards the county.
Yeah, well, you gotta find out. It's not a pit.
Then it's not, it's, I don't know, it, it, it's on the line, it's like part of.
It's easy. I mean, they can cut the tree up. Whoever, if somebody can cut it up, D O T gonna pick it up regardless. I'm talking about it gotta be cut up. No, they may not get it in one bite, but they don't have to. I mean, they cut it up. I understand it's a tall time, but it has to be cut.
But the county owns that site.
The county owns. Okay, so you contacted county for that or they need to be?
That's the thing too. There's concern about a pecan tree in their yard. I don't know if I can take it down. Can I take it down? But where it's gonna fall, I don't know. The city can't be liable for going around taking somebody's tree down on private property. So if it falls on their house. City can't be liable. Other issue we have with the water pressure during uh Devitt. We bought both thermostat or emergency generator out of the water plant. So green power pretty quick without getting out of there and addressing. And when we started the water plant back up, the pressure was down about forty-two pound pressure. I mean, Anita, Vanessa, and Jackson was there and they seen the pressure whenever we got the power back to the water plant. So, I mean, forty-two pounds of pressure, that, that's, that's not a lot of pressure. I mean, some homes they probably had, I'd say thirty-five, thirty-eight pounds of pressure. But green power did get out there and they fixed the generator and was able to uh get the water back to the town.
And all the generators gassed up?
That's another thing. I know I told you all in the special meeting last time that the county was gonna come out and fill our generators and not charge the service charge.
Gotta be a, a service charge, I bet you.
All they was gonna charge is for the fuel. Keep this in mind. I thought the county had a service truck. They have a hundred gallon tank. My generator's holding approximately two thousand gallons. You know how many trips that is for them to come back and forth from Jacksonville? So I've called around and. They was on, hint of oil, used to go over and fill our generator, but they said it's not worth their time or money to come over and fill our generators with fuel that we need. So Johnson and Johnson out of Madison, they will come and fill our generators. Plus, they will give us a five gallon, uh five hundred gallon tank just in case. During Hurricane Debbie, a lot of y'all don't know this, but at three o'clock in the morning, I got an alarm. The generator at the sewer plant was out of fuel. I called Charles Boone. His son Cliff came up with a hundred and fifty gallons. To get me through to the morning to be able to start the sewer plant back up, keep from overflowing or being fired by D V. So Johnson and Johnson out of Madison, they'll come fuel all our tanks. Plus, give us a, a five hundred gallon tank. We just have to purchase a trailer to haul it on, to mobilize it. And the trailer's anywhere from fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars. It's gotta be a dual axle. We can also fill our heavy equipment, our mini excavator and our backhoe. We need whatever. With that fuel, and they'll come anytime and refuel anything we need for two dollars and seventy-three cents a gallon. That's as for fuel, service charge and everything out of Madison. The only thing we have to do is purchase uh at least a fourteen foot trailer, dual axle trailer to mobilize that fuel tank on. But at three o'clock in the morning, we were charged eighteen hundred dollars. And I, I, I realized at three o'clock in the morning on the weekend, emergency call, it was eighteen hundred dollars for them to come out. But they saved us. And how I do, I appreciate y'all for doing that. But they came out and they uh filled our generator, sewer plant, and I was able to regain power back through that generator. Because there's so much running on that generator at the sewer plant. You have floors, there's three aerators and five pumps. It's just a lot of energy. The more, the more energy you use, the more fuel they gonna use on the generators. So I ran that generator for four days, trying to get somebody out to fuel it. Well, I had a little record of a tank and thought that would be enough to get me through the morning, but it wasn't. So they charged eighteen hundred dollars.
For a hundred and fifty gallons?
A hundred and fifty gallons.
And this one is by trailer for twelve hundred, fifteen hundred for five thousand gallons?
Five hundred gallons.
Five hundred, I'm sorry.
And then I could take that myself at three o'clock in the morning and go put five hundred gallons in it. The generator at sewer plant holds seven hundred and fifty gallons.
Okay. Is this, can this fuel be used for all of them?
All the generators except the ones that's on, I have four on propane and I have three. No, no, I have three on propane and four on fuel. And then the fire station is on propane. The town hall, four live stations, the water plant and the sewer plant are all on diesel.
So with, with that, can you get a trailer for propane and one for fuel? Cause which one you need for the generator?
I, I have to get some of my computer propane.
So.
Cause my propane's good. I mean, I get some woods out of Jacksonville because they just came yesterday to fill up all my propane.
Okay.
The just from, I had ninety percent on Jackson Street, that propane during Halene. After I regained power, I had thirty percent. I mean, they burned, I mean, they burned the fuel, especially when you're without power. I mean, how long was you without power? Six days?
No, it felt like it.
Four.
Four, uh four days. That's how much, that's how much, because they were out on Jackson Street.
Yeah. We, I, I, we definitely gonna need that backup. And I do think it makes more sense financially to get the trailer with the five hundred. Um because yeah, the citizens that's here didn't have water. I'm quite sure y'all like, hey, get that, get that five hundred. And yeah, I mean, and then if it's something. If it's, if it's really, really bad, cause we just had many trees down and they can't get to us. Then that's gonna delay the process of people getting water even longer. So and what, wait a minute, where you gonna store it? Cause the pole barn got it tore down.
Probably out of the water plant. But I mean, I don't, I don't have the issue coming out at one o'clock, three o'clock. That, that's not the issue. The issue is the town paying eighteen hundred dollars for a hundred and fifty gallon of fuel.
Right.
But like I said, I, I, I do appreciate it, but they saved us.
Did he have a price on that? He said fifteen, twelve, fifteen. He'll give us him both. He'll give you the invoice, but I can, I can, I can do that.
Now, Johnson and Johnson, uh Sam, I forget his last name, but he did tell me. If you get a trailer for about fifteen hundred dollars, you, or you're gonna be doing all of the fuel tank on it. You don't need to be a new trailer.
But, but just in case it's over my approval amount, not the trailer. Cause I want them to, while they here, fill up everything and then fill up that five hundred. So it may go over thirty-five.
I hope y'all, anybody drive a diesel. But if you look two dollars seventy-three cents a gallon, share it, build up. And that's the service, that's everything.
Can't beat that.
And even if they could go over that, I mean, it, it's just, whatever your cost of it is for all for a diesel. But two dollars seventy-three cents a gallon is something minus to build up.
Good.
No, it's not locked in. They go by whatever the board rating of all, uh for diesel rich.
Cause you're gonna put off-road diesel in there, right?
Right.
Okay.
Ray, had you mentioned about if you had a trailer, you can take it to the five transport. You need an emergency vehicle, they get it.
Right. If I, I had a trailer, I could mobilize that in the name. But I mean, I, I can't, I can't expect the county. You talking about twenty trailers from Jacksonville to White Springs. I thought they had a service truck. They got a hundred gallon tank.
I wanna ask that on the county graveyard. I don't, I don't just want, I don't wanna um leave it to my approval amount for just a trailer. Because I'm quite sure when they add the fuel of everything in it, I'm, I'm gonna ask the council whether um approve up to properly. Let's just say three thousand, maybe five thousand. I don't know how much it take to fill everything, for him to fill everything. Plus get that trailer and the reserve fuel. So I don't know. You think, you think five is safe?
I think so.
Okay.
But like I said, now.
So you can go ahead and do it.
I mean, let me say, we probably aren't gonna get no power out of this. We don't know that.
Yeah.
What if I said they were to have a tank of fuel like I am running out of sewer plant and we can be powered?
So you need, yeah, I need to take, cause you need to get them here tomorrow.
Right.
To fill up everything because if they out of power, they don't need to be out of water and power. They need, they need to be able to flush the fluids immediately. Okay.
The county came yesterday, but they got stuck out of sewer plant. So they couldn't come back. They, they brought a hundred gallons to the sewer plant. So I definitely buy a little over half of it.
So where, so on all of them, they not, none of them full right now?
All the program is on.
But, but also diesel, okay. Yeah.
I'm setting by a half tank.
So, I don't know, what are we gonna call it for? So can I get a motion to approve for Ray to get a trailer with the tank for fuel?
But plus to fill up all the tanks, plus to fill up all the tanks.
What the level of the tanks now, Ray? Just a trailer?
No.
No, I have a motion. Vanessa, I have a motion on the floor. Can I have a motion to approve?
I can reverse motion that we approve up to five thousand dollars for the trailer, the reserve, the fuel. And the things that we need to make sure we are sustained and then on the storm and to fill up what need to be filled out.
Can I get a second on the motion?
I ran off second motion.
Any discussion?
No, we, I, I just, we need water. That's a very important thing. I was just like, where are we now with the level of, of diesel?
Like I said, you got, you got, I'm not gonna run you out of water.
No, he's saying what, like? How many, how many of this? Four? Diesel?
No.
Diesel?
No.
How many?
You got the water plant, the sewer plant, the master lift station, first street lift station, category, uh, five lift station, town hall.
So what?
See there, you need fuel now.
We're not on the generating, so we need to save fuel. How about, don't put that building that we can't go in on and just, don't fill that up. Cause we can't use it. We're not in that building. We can't use that building. Use that for, for the water, for the citizens.
They, I mean, they, they can do that, but it's not good when a generator just sitting there.
No, I mean, it's some gas in there, correct?
Yeah.
But you don't have to top it off.
No, 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 no.
Right, cause we not using the building.
This, this is not going to examine my fuel anyway.
Okay.
If it's just sitting there out, not, not small, they, they don't use that much fuel for that sewer plant.
Yeah, but it, it's, it's.
Don't have to top it off.
Alright, so we have most people house.
I even cut, I even cut some floors off and some pumps to save fuel.
We can't cut the pumps off. We gotta go to the.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. We have discussion. Can I, y'all will go to the floor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, um Mr. Mick Shay, I would like to personally thank you on behalf of the town for your help with Ray with the drone. Flying it over the sewer tank and getting that serial number. That was a big help cause that saved us what, five?
How much that saved your town?
About fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Fifty-eight.
He had suitcases on his arm and he thinks he's going to Neptune, was it Neptune? No, it's not.
Neptune Beach, yeah.
Yeah, cause his wife was there and he, he dropped everything. He says she can wait.
I'm glad that it worked.
Thank you.
I, I forgot to report.
He was around with his machine, Ray. He woke Ray up five o'clock in the morning of the storm, asking to come out to move trees. Which Ray had to tell him, Levi, it's still dark outside. The lines are down. You can't go out there moving, moving trees. He was, he was there in daylight and he worked all day.
And he does that every storm.
Every storm.
And so we wanna thank him personally. Thank you, Mr. Levi, for watching tonight or if anybody see him and knows. Give him our thanks.
I mean, all the streets too. He's stuck on forty-one.
You make sure you put it in the um, uh, contract. You make sure you put it.
Anything for the fire chief?
Uh, the fire chief, um, he experienced severe damage. Uh, so he couldn't come tonight, but he had a lot, a lot of damage. He is probably one of the ones out of all of us that was hit the hardest. So people made their prayers and.
Alright. No other presentations. Citizens from the floor, Ms. Adrian, statue.
I just have questions. Um, do you know when they might come and pick up the debris? Will it still sit here at Christmas?
Probably.
Nah, I remember they said they just started.
They said they were gonna try to have everybody to bring it up later in July four.
I was gonna say, I got twelve trees of this bit down. And another eighteen to twenty trees of this big.
Well, now the problem is too, is that because we have another storm, they have to use the people. Sometimes the people that's picking up the trees gotta go do another task to get ready for this storm. And then also they are, some of them are being um redirected to other places. To try to get, like if you're in Tampa, let's get this debris up so it won't be mistle. So a lot of resources are going out there to try to.
Sounds, but my entire right away is full.
Yeah, yeah, but they're like, hey, we can, we can be okay for now, but it's other people that are a little bit more extreme. So.
And debris is nothing compared to what some people.
You're gonna be like, where in the hell do you live?
We'll ask you that. I'm literally the.
I live right across the street from the apartments. Yeah, the plot house.
I wanted that house.
I got it.
At a good price.
Alright, so um yeah, they, Ray doesn't have a date for that yet?
Yeah, I was just curious cause I got, I still don't even have, I've got my front claim. I have. Yeah, I was just curious, because I got, I still don't even have, I got my front claim, I haven't even started my back.
I mean, I'm.
Yeah, some trees like that.
If contract is the same last time, they won't play. The boys, they got out there and they got it, I didn't even have to show them, they went down every road inside the town, and I, I mean, I couldn't believe it, they never called me one time.
It might be good that you don't have, that they haven't come yet, because you say you haven't started your back, they're not gonna come back, so, go ahead and get your back done, and put it all out there, so they can come one time, because if they come at one time, that go come back. Yeah, so it may be a good thing they haven't come yet, give you time to put more stuff.
But I'm worried about all that stuff out there and how it's gonna fly around.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do though about that, because this is.
Um, second question, did we lose water this last time?
Yep, it was temporary, yeah.
Only for a little bit.
Was there a boil notice put out?
It wasn't, it didn't go low enough to have a boil notice, that's why he was telling the water pressure.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, he probably, he probably lost pressure, so I mean.
Oh, yeah, we have practically black water.
Yeah, he probably out thirty-five, thirty-eight pounds of pressure.
I don't know what we have, but we have.
Yeah, and that's why we're, that's why we're talking about getting the gas, because, well, I think that got scrubbed, that got hit.
Yeah.
Then, you had to get a part and everything for that, so that's, that's what we trying to avoid, um, generator, the backup generator going out.
Oh, okay, all right.
I mean, I do, I go around, like, the day I went around, I started every generator, tried to start everyone, just to make sure everything working, like the sewer plant, it had a dead battery. So, and that's why, why I do that, I mean.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I was just wondering.
They say it's more than it is, but.
Because it was one of those, I, I thought we had to put a number on a list for boil notice, but I didn't get a text, so, did I not do something right?
No, the question never got a little enough.
Okay.
Numbers never got a little enough.
That was all, thank you.
Good to hear.
All right, all, under all business, um, for Brandon's stuff, you have something for him, or?
No, they're, they're not here, I think they're done with their final, with Clay, Clay, Clay and I discussed, they're done with their final.
Okay. Uh, law enforcement contract?
Yeah, I think they, it's gonna be, get together, we're talking about, I'm trying to make it to identify that we're just in a contract.
Okay.
And get out the letter. We'll book it together. And I know the letter that you want.
What do you want today?
Uh, I can't, I, I was gonna tell you, we, we got it.
Oh, you didn't, let me know that, come on back.
I just need to listen.
Oh, oh, they weren't here. People sent a diamond plaque.
Oh, I see.
And then since that was updated, so.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, I know you're gonna put it there about getting our, our bills, but let me make sure everything can get there.
Yeah. For our bills. She's gonna get, they get the dates where they actually, you know, like, the, um, reaches up the contract, okay? All right, so we'll go into new business, that's Vanessa, the procurement of contractors before a storm, and she mentioned that. She did talk about that, is that something you'll be, um, listening to?
I think it's more so, um, but just to, at Hammond's Galley, you just mentioned, we can, um, do our own procurement before the storm.
Okay.
I mean, I do that till it happens, and like it used to be, so the procurement part of that, it's, we can do it prior to the actual storm now.
And what about the formation of a White Springs Historical Committee?
I think we kinda talked about it last meeting, I think we men- mentioned to our attorney, um, about a better ad hoc kind of thing. She can kind of put us in with that, I mentioned that to her, she, she will get this. Yeah, that's right. So, well, my, I'm gonna put my mask on, I do not have COVID. Are you sure? I'm positive. You know, I test, I'm a type of a hypoconcept test, like, COVID, but it's far kindness, so just.
Yeah, me too.
This is something for a lot of.
Well, it was COVID, it's too late to put the mask on. It was too late.
We're doing.
Okay, so this is sort of a first shot at it, because typically, um, when you're looking at a historic preservation committee, commission board, it's a very elaborate process. You know, we're talking about, you're putting on five individuals on it, and it's not just anybody and everybody, they typically have to have expertise in architecture, history, and things of that nature. Um, and then you're also have people coming before you with different plans, and whether or not those plans meet the historic preservation. Out, yeah, so you have to be able to lay out what, you know, so you can't just say, oh, the, the design has to match the rest of the design. You have to be able to say what that design is, if we have a historic district, we have to define what that district is. So, as a beginning point, I think we have to start the process at the beginning, before we put in what the rules are about plans that come before, um, that may violate the historic preservation, since we don't know what those historic preservations are. So this just, um, is that first? So as we talked about before, it would be basically adding duties on to the town planning and zoning board. Um, so it's, it goes over the where asked part, like, why are we doing this, the purpose and intent, and then for the duties, um, it would start with, so for the duties, Kat, they're not limited to continuing to survey an inventory of historic buildings. So that is sort of where you start, is, you know, if you were trying to have historic buildings, you have to identify them first. So, identifying what those historic buildings are, identify the historic areas, and that doesn't just include, like, homes and things of that nature, buildings, it can include archaeological sites that are of importance. And then recommending the designations of historic districts, individual landmarks or landmark sites, um, regulating alteration, demolition, relocations, and new construction to designated property. So it gives us on the process, adopting guidelines for changes to designated property, coordinating the historic preservation work, kind of working with and advising with the federal, state, and county government, advising and assisting property owners and other persons who are interested in historic preservation, initiating plans for preservation and rehabilitation of individual historic buildings and landmarks, undertaking educational programs, um, but then we also have here, the board shall review all nominations of local properties through the national registry. So you have, so you have the national registry, okay, so you have the federal, and then you have the state registry, and then, of course, you get to the local. Um, one of the great things about starting a program like this is there's money. So if you heard, um, and then we before, she was talking about money that she was able to get from like, she said it came from historic preservation fund. Well, there you go, you can get money. Um, but it starts with first identifying the buildings, identifying the areas, and then building that process in there, sure.
Now, White Springs, um, has already been declared his glory community, and so there are landmarks that are already.
So, right. Um, is it the entire town that is a historic district, or are there parts?
This part is just from, where is it, did you know exactly where it's at?
When Tay was talking, and even Chairman, she came in, I believe it's, it's White's, the town of White Springs.
The whole town.
The town, yes. And there is a list, if I'm not mistaken.
Your taste out, that she had a lot of information.
So we would need to start there, but then, what would it mean, so when people come before you, and they have plans for a home, or a property, or a building changes, is there a process to make sure that those, uh, plans adhere to the historic nature of the area?
We have, um, that's what we use EGA.
Yeah, we're losing them.
Yeah, now.
Land development regulations are out of date, so that's why we use it.
And so I did notice, I mean, obviously the individuals that you have working on that are per type of profession.
Yes.
That needs to be evolved in defining what type of, um, what the characteristics are of the historical district. So, if we already have some buildings, if we already have some boundaries, we can define those and put them in here. And then if we are ready and we're at a spot where we're, we're able to say, if these areas are touched by change, then the people have to come before us, submit those changes, and they have to adhere to the historic nature. Um, and then you have to provide, again, um, an appeal process, it has to be able to hold up in court, because y'all know how people are about wanting to make changes to their property. Um, and if you could have a situation where you've got individuals who are from, of course, the city or the town of White Springs, but you may have to actually get some individuals outside of the town of White Springs, to have the architectures and framing professionals to be a part of that decision-making process. Um, let me see here, the other thing is becoming, let me see if I can find the right words in here. It's like local government. The name is a weird name, I can't even think, local government? There's a designation. Um, let me look it in here. Local government, I don't know if it's something, it's something like local government something, I can't find it in here. But if you get that designation, and you need certain requirements.
Local government comprehensive planning and land development, no, that's a regulation.
That's a regulation, yeah, but there is, where you go through the state and you meet certain requirements, then that also gives you a certain amount of protection. But with those requirements, you have to have a certain number of meetings every year, you know, and how they're noticed, and how you report that information to the state. So, this is just a beginning, and I would recommend everyone kind of take a look at it and see what we add, where, where are we at in this process, where are we going to add more than this? Um, we wanna start here, and, you know, just adding it in as a duty and responsibility for the town planning and zoning board, where.
I thought you were just gonna form a whole new committee, you talked about it.
So we can't do a separate.
Not, not one that's in a charter, like a committee, like how they have the, um, special events committee, they have a special events committee, um, that's not in the charter, they have committees that's not, that's why it's not board, it's a committee.
So, one of the things, with the way that the charter is written, it just, I mean, it's one of those where normally you have, and other boards and commissions have decided, and I'm sure you can, but it doesn't really allow for it so much. So that's why when we were at the last meeting, we talked about adding it as.
Anhok?
Well, adding it as, because you can add on to the duties of a committee or board, as determined by the town council.
Gotcha.
And since that historic preservation is really a part of the town planning and zoning efforts, it kind of makes sense to tack it on here. But, like I said, this is a first go around, I was like, you know, we can add in another seven, eight pages of stuff we not gonna do, or we're not able to do yet.
Correct.
And, but once you put those type of things on the books, it's a double-edged sword, because now if you don't tell that new property owner to make these changes, the people around them are gonna say it's on the books, why didn't you do it, whereas maybe we're just not at that point yet, where we have the expertise to make property owners do something or not do something. So.
Okay.
I can get a list of all of the designations from a head to the contact when I go back there.
So.
Okay.
I'll work this. So historic designations, buildings, landmarks, things of that nature, areas. So I think it, it, you know, it starts there, and there is a part there about educational opportunities. Um, because I think that would go along the way to helping to educate the residents about the history, and doing events around that. But ultimately, I mean, you guys don't know what you're interested in, or you want added to it, but you can do that.
All right, any comments from the council, Jody? No? Randall?
No, no comments.
Y'all kids?
Of course, yeah.
Um, as most of, um, with the storm, the high, the school district is closed. It was gonna be just for Wednesday, but now it is for Thursday also. The plan is to return Friday, which is early this month, so at twelve o'clock, but of course, that's pending on whatever may happen. But as another will return, um, it will be homecoming. And also, I had a couple of citizens with the way they were storming that, telling that we just got off, a lot of them wanted to know if the town would be willing to get another Facebook page, so that we go spell and inform them of what's going on.
I think we need to get the attorney on that, because we got a lot of issues with that.
Yeah.
They put too much stuff on that.
But, I do know the thing.
Where nobody can call them.
They, you can't get it so that, no, we can come up, come in on it, or you could approve it, um, they comment, or whatever. So why they not go on Facebook, they can't just go to the website?
They, they asked, and I say I will bring it, and. So.
Yeah, keep that Facebook computer, and they can just go to the website.
They said they never go to the website, because they can't go to the website.
Which I, I told them that as well, but they asked, and I told them I will bring it back to council. So. Um, let me see, other than that, that's to, with the library being open full time now, we after school hours, um, I know David Law, one of our teachers, is at the library often tutoring, so whoever may need it, some of our students, some of that, whoever's there. And also, we're gonna work on other tutoring sessions for possible Saturday. So if anyone want to volunteer and help, and their expertise in that, we accept it. And also things, some of the citizens that came out to help with the, um, we set up with Red Cross as well, as Salvation Army, everything that we, you know, we put out there, and the ones that came out to help, town council came out to help, our mayor, county commissioner, town manager, so, me personally just saying thank you, period, for the things that you won't get. Because I know a lot of people was upset that things should go out faster, but as I told them, given the fact that we are in times that we never seen before, we all learning how to navigate this, and so when you don't see your town officials, does not mean they're not making calls and texts and emails, they're still working. So, thank you all.
Randall? No?
No more comment.
All right. A journey meeting at seven thirty-nine P M.